Good evening. I'd like to call to order the city council meeting for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for February thirteenth, 2013. Would you please stand as you are able and join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll of the members?
Ms. Nosler Beck.
Here.
Ms. Dozeman.
Here.
Mr. Ohm.
Here.
Mayor Protem Stites.
Here.
Councilmember Hoppy.
Present.
Councilmember Weaver.
Here.
Councilmember Holte.
I am here.
And Councilmember Hutchinson.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, all members of council are present. We have a floor.
Okay, just in time. Thank you very much. Let's see, councilors, we have no minutes in your packets, so we'll move any changes to the agenda to be noted. None noted, so we'll move with the agenda as presented. And we're really fortunate to have a great recognition tonight. I'm going to go to the podium and go from there. Tonight, it is really our pleasure to have with us tonight the Wheat Ridge High School Boys and Girls Cross Country Team from Wheat Ridge High School. Leading the contingent tonight is hedge coach Scott Chamberlain and Judy Chamberlain, although I understand Judy is not with us tonight feeling ill, and assistant coach Dan Ross. And I'd like to invite Coach Chamberlain to the podium now to introduce his coaching staff, tell us about his students and his runners, his fast runners. So, Coach, come on up.
Fast runners and good kids. That's maybe more important. Thank you, Mayor Starke, and distinguished council members. It's a tremendous honor for our cross-country team to be here with you this evening. We thank you so much for the invitation and especially to share our achievements and the exceptional character and accomplishments of these student athletes. Our cross-country coaches, unfortunately, a couple of them think they might have COVID and didn't get a chance to get a test today, and one of them's away on a business meeting. So, we're underrepresented as far as our coaching staff. It's me, I've already been introduced, and Nyla Chamberlain, please stand up, Nyla. The rest of our coaching staff, Judy Chamberlain is sick, Dan Ross, and Ben Adams are not available because of business travel primarily. But we wish that it would have worked out different, and Judy was sad she couldn't come because she was looking forward to it, but that happens. The highest individual honors you can achieve in cross-country in our districts are MVP and All-Conference honors. All-conference honors are very, very difficult in our sport, perhaps one of the toughest sports, because there's no consistent performance kind of voting and just somebody who shows up and they're consistently doing well, they don't get voted in as All-Conference. In our sport, all-conference is only given by place, very much like the Olympic Games. It's that day, that event, and it is extremely hard to achieve, because you literally have to beat everyone head-to-head and finish ahead of all these people to earn that honor. And we are very excited, and we give fewer All-Conference awards in the sport across country than other sports, like maybe a third as many of the other sports. And we are super excited that six of our athletes achieved All-Conference honors this year. And would you guys please, should I have them come up now?
Absolutely.
Would you guys please come up when I call your name, and then we're going to call everybody up also. Come on up, Grace Goodwin, honorable mention, Ethan Klein, honorable mention, Leif Dahl, second team, Adam Mueller, second team, Scott Figursky, second team, and Arabella England, first team. And in addition to her first-team All-Conference, Arabella advanced to the state championship finals, where she placed in the top third of all athletes in the state of Colorado, which is extremely hard to do. A lot of teams, thank you, a lot of teams don't get an athlete to the state championship every year. It's really very prestigious. In addition to that, though, and perhaps the thing we might be most proud of, it is one of the things we are most proud of year by year, and that is we are thankful for, with our cross-country teams, something that's far bigger than just athletics. It's their character. Their personal conduct and caring for the well-being and achievements of everyone is exemplary. Whether it's a teammate, competitor, coach, athlete, spectator, or official, it represents the exceptional quality of citizenship and community leadership that both our boys' and girls' team, they demonstrate every day, and especially during intense emotional challenges in competition. And every year, our district awards a very top few number of teams with the prestigious Paul Davis Award. Year by year, Wheat Ridge Cross Country has been consistent in earning some level of this award, and this year was no exception, and they really skyrocketed this year. We are particularly thankful and proud of this group of young people. Everybody else, please come on up, all the rest of us. Everyone here represents this in huge format every day when we are at meets, and cross-country specifically is honored by this, because in cross-country, unlike other sports where teams are separated, we are integrated. At every meet, we are together, we compete against the other athletes head-to-head, on the starting line, in warm-ups, with our gathering tents and canopies next to each other. We are integrated with every other team. So, when you are voted for Team Sportsmanship, it's meaningful, and we couldn't be more proud of these guys. And what we achieved this year is almost perfection. Our boys' team achieved second in the district for Paul Davis Sportsmanship Award, and our girls achieved first in the district for Paul Davis Sportsmanship. And one more thing I want to brag about if I have the chance here. Early in the season, our teams were both competing super well, and we thought, wow, we're going to be top-three teams in JFCO in both boys' and girls'. That would have gone on and happened, as it did with the boys, top three, with the girls also, except we had one of our really strong top-scoring athletes going into league get injured and need surgery, and so she couldn't even compete for us. But so, really, we barely missed it for girls of no fault of our own, and guys got top-three in league championships. So, thank you very much for the recognition here today, and we appreciate it so much that in honor of tomorrow's Valentine's Day, we brought a Valentine treat for all the council members and the mayor. So, thank you guys very, very much. Grab those. You want to take, hey, guys, guys, stay up here, and we'll take some pictures.
Yeah, you got, get back up in front of the council. Councilors always like to get in the photo, too. Coach, I've got some certificates here for you and your coaching staff and your athletes, and I want to say on behalf of the city and the city council and all the folks in Wheat Ridge, congratulations, runners. You're great to have, you know, you're great at your team sport, but more than that, you're great people, and we really want great people in Wheat Ridge. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Good job, you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Those look lovely.
And I would, I want to admonish all of the councilors not to, not to get cupcake in the microphones, so. Okay. Thank you very much. Our next order on the agenda is the public's right to speak, and the public has an opportunity to speak now on any item that is not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes to address the council. When I call your name, if you'd please come to the podium and introduce yourself with your first name and your last name. If you'd please spell your last name for the record and provide us an address, then you'll have three minutes to address the council. So, our first speaker that I have signed up is Eric Martinez.
I apologize in advance. I don't have treats for you all.
That's okay. We're pretty full up right now.
Good. I'm Eric Martinez, M-A-R-T-I-N-E-Z, and I'm at 3212 Pierce Street. So, thank you for your time today and for the forum to address issues facing our community. I've been a resident of Wheat Ridge for about a year and a half now, and my wife and I live near the intersection of 32nd and Pierce on Pierce Street. We couldn't be happier about Wheat Ridge and the community of people that we have living here. We're excited about the focus on economic development throughout the city. In fact, my wife and I attempt to walk down Pierce, the 38th Avenue, so that we can frequent and support local businesses. We want to economically support these local businesses so that 38th continues to grow and eventually becomes a thriving shopping, eating, and community center. The walk down Pierce to get to 38th, however, is flat-out dangerous in some parts. Sidewalks comprise only about 50% of the path from 32nd to 38th, and oftentimes only on one side of the street. There are sidewalk gaps the entire length where we have to navigate the bike lane or even the road itself. When we walk our dog down the street to try to get to Mestizo Brew Cantina, Clancy's Irish Pub, Mr. Biscuit's Bakery, or other great businesses, I genuinely worry that a car will hit us because we don't have something as simple as a sidewalk. Perhaps this solution worked in the past when Pierce and Wheat Ridge in general was less frequented and cars went a little slower. Wheat Ridge is busier than ever, and more people are walking. We are not as rural as we once were. I'm not coming to city council today describing a short, dead-in street that's hardly frequented. I'm coming to you all speaking about this issue on a key corridor that funnels people toward the main street of our city. I encourage each and every one of you to walk down Pierce and feel the cars whizzing past you, only a mere one to two feet away. Perhaps bring your dog, your baby in a stroller, or an elderly parent, and see how it feels. Trying to support businesses in the community shouldn't be a frightening experience, and we should be encouraging pedestrian usage, not building architecture that discourages people to walk in their neighborhood. Looking out my home-office window, I also see numerous people every day having to walk in the road to simply get to the bus stop on 32nd and Pierce to get to work. Is this really the best that we can do? I think we can do and should do much better. I've used my time today referencing Pierce specifically between 32nd and 38th because that's where I live, but unfortunately, this example is an all-too-common representation of an issue occurring all over our community. Going the other direction towards 29th on Pierce is even worse. I know many of you in this very council share my concerns. Councilperson Rachel Grace Holton even penned a compassionate article in the most recent edition of the Neighborhood Gazette, and I've heard of others who were injured walking on Pierce. Demand from your constituents is loud and clear, so what are we really waiting on? The Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan addresses sidewalk gap filling, but the maps in the document aren't even accurate, and they show areas that have sidewalk gaps as fully filled. The 38th Corridor Plan acknowledges the importance of Pierce specifically as it relates to intersecting with 38th, but this importance is lost on pedestrians as they walk down Pierce because they're too busy dodging trucks and cars. Let's do better and improve our community. Listen to your constituents and fill in sidewalk gaps on key corridors to improve street safety now. Thanks again for your time. Get to work.
Thank you. I don't have anyone else signed up to speak now. If you're here in the hall and would like to speak, you may come to the podium now, and I'll ask if we have anyone online. If you're online, you may raise your hand, and we'll bring you into the meeting.
No, Mr. Mayor.
And I don't see anyone with their hands raised, so we will close our public's right to speak and go to our agenda item number one. This is our consent agenda item. Counselor Dozeman, would you please introduce this item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Consent Agenda Item 1A, Motion to Approve an Amendment and Extension to the Contract with Charles Abbott Associates Incorporated for Building Division Services and Authorizing All Subsequent Payments. At issue, Charles Abbott Associates Incorporated has provided contractual building division services for the city since 2018. This request extends their contract by two years through March 2025. Consent Agenda Item Number 1B, Resolution Number 062023, A Resolution Amending the Fiscal Year 2023 Budget to Reflect the Approval of a Supplemental Budget Appropriation for the Reappropriation and Reencumbrance of 2022 Fiscal Year Encumbered Funds in the Amount of $18,424,962.79. At issue, there are sixty open purchase orders from the 2022 budget that will be carried over to the 2023 budget. Each purchase order is associated with a specific project that was not fully completed in the 2022 fiscal year. The funds which are encumbered for these purchase orders were transferred to the unreserved fund balance of the relevant fund when the purchase orders were closed. To continue or close out these projects in 2023, a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $18,424,962.79 is necessary to allow transfer of these funds into specific budget line items in the 2023 budget. And lastly, Consent Agenda Item 1C, A Motion to Cancel the March 27, 2023 Regular Meeting of the Wheat Ridge City Council. Four members of city council, the city manager and deputy city manager, will be attending the National League of Cities Congressional Conference in Washington, DC from March 25th to March 29th. It is recommended that city council cancel the March 27 regular meeting.
Thank you very much. This is our consent agenda. Counsel, Counselor Dozeman, may I have a motion on Agenda Item Number 1A, 1B, and 1C?
I move to approve Consent Agenda Items 1A, 1B, and 1C.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Stites. Would the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you. We will go to Agenda Item Number Two. Mayor Protem Stites, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A motion approving the revised council rules of order and procedure dated February 13, 2023. At issue, the Charter of the City of Wheat Ridge provides that the council may determine its own rules of procedure for meetings. Section B of Suspension and Amendment of these rules states these rules may be amended or new rules adopted by the majority vote of city council members present at a regular or special meeting, provided that the proposed amendments or new rules shall have been submitted in writing to city council at a proceeding meeting or study session. Any city council member or the mayor may initiate an amendment of these rules in the manner provided for initiation of agenda items by Rule VD. These rules shall be reviewed and revised by the city council as needed and as provided herein.
Thank you. This will be a motion to the council. Mr. Goff, do we have any presentation, staff presentation on this item?
Just real briefly, Mayor, these items were discussed at the council retreat a few weeks ago. Primarily, the First Amendment is to change the start time of the regular business meetings from 7:00 to 6:30 p.m., and then also to insert some language in the rules. First of all, that it's the expectation that council members will read comments that are received from our residents through the Wheat Ridge Speaks online program, and then also insert language that council members are expected to attend council meetings in person. We do have the Zoom remote option, but that's for last resort.
Okay, thank you. Before I go to any questions from council, I'll open this up to the public. If anyone's here from the public to speak, I have no one signed up, but you may speak on this item. And if you are online, please raise your hand, and I don't see anyone coming forward or anyone online, so we will close our public's right to speak. And are there any questions from staff before I call for a motion? Counselor Nosler Beck.
Just with the 6:30 meeting times, when does that go into effect, and how are we notifying the public about that?
Sure, to be effective, the February 27 meeting. We don't have any public hearings scheduled before tonight, so we're okay there. We've already sent some notices out this morning through the Mayor's Matters, and I think, Ali, do you have some additional updates on that?
Yeah, we'll make, thank you for the question, Councilor Nosler Beck. In addition to the Mayor's Matters subscriber list, we sent a sort of a dedicated, hey, there's been a change, based on your consensus from the last meeting. We'll, of course, obviously push this out through the website, social media. We'll see if we can get something published in the Gazette, just making sure that folks know that this is coming. We'll do a good job.
Okay, happy to help, too. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? All right. Mayor Protem Stites, may I have a motion on Agenda Item Number Two?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the revised city council rules of order and procedure dated February 13, 2023.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Weaver. Is there any discussion on the motion? Oh, it was you? Okay, well, I stand corrected then, or sit corrected. We'll get a second by Counselor Hoppy, and then I'll go for any questions on, or any discussion on the motion. Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to Agenda Item Number Three. Counselor Hoppy, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to Approve Installation of a Traffic Calming Device on Lamar Street between 32nd Avenue and 33rd Avenue in accordance with the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program. At issue, residents on Lamar Street petitioned the city to address traffic issues on the street segment from 32nd Avenue to 33rd Avenue. In accordance with the city's Neighborhood Traffic Management Program, the NTMP, the city met with the residents at the neighborhood meeting and subsequently devised a plan to install a speed hump to mitigate the traffic issues. The residents then secured a petition with the necessary number of property owner signatures, supporting the installation of a speed hump in accordance with the NTMP policy, and are hereby seeking approval for implementation.
Thank you. This will be a resolution of the council. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
Yes, I believe Mr. Jordan Jeffries, engineer in our community development department, has a few words to, Mr. Jeffries.
Hi, I'm Jordan Jeffries. I'm a civil engineer in the Community Development Department. I help administer the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program. I don't have a presentation for you tonight, but I can just make some brief remarks and be here for any questions you have, give you some history on this segment. Lamar Street, the segment in question is 32nd to 33rd Avenue. The residents petitioned the city back in March of 2021. We had gathered some data, a couple rounds of data, and found that they did meet the criteria for traffic calming on the street. So, we went ahead and met with the residents in July, or June of 2022, and talked with them, and shared the results of our study with them. The consensus on that call was to move forward with permanent traffic calming devices. So, we looked at the segment and determined it was best treated with one speed hump along the segment. And the neighbors then went around and collected signatures, got the necessary number of signatures on the petition, meeting the 80% threshold. So, we do recommend approval. I know the NTMP, you guys may be aware that it's on hold right now, but this case and a couple others were well along the way of gathering signatures for their petition at the time the program went on hold. Therefore, we think it makes sense to just carry these last few segments through on the whole program.
Thank you. Before we go to questions from council, I'd like to open this to the public. I have no one signed up to speak on this item, but if you are here and would like to speak, you may do so now, and if you are online, you may raise your hand, and we'll bring you into the meeting to speak. But I don't see anybody coming forward, so we'll close our public's right to speak on this and ask if we have questions from council. Counselor Holte.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Jordan, for bringing this forward. I just want to clarify, so it's my understanding, and this is not pertinent to this specific case, but that the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program is currently being reevaluated, and so is it on hold, subject to the recommendations coming forward for revising it?
That's correct. We're not taking any current applications at this time for NTMP until we revise the program.
Thank you. And I just want to clarify that we had talked previously about setting aside, I think, $50,000 that would be used for safe routes to school, and I just want to make sure that those are still moving forward as the city's proactively looking at ways that we can invest in safe crossings for our kids.
Yes, we are, and I think those funds have been carried forward to 2023 as well. So, that is in our queue for work this year.
Okay, great. I appreciate the clarification.
Any additional questions? Okay, Counselor Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Yippee. I'm very happy. I walk down 33rd almost every day, and I do have a question. Most of the streets from Pierce to Herlin, except for streets that are cul-de-sacs, have stop signs. There's no stop sign on Lamar right at 33rd. Why?
On which street, I'm sorry?
Lamar.
Lamar.
Where the hump's going to be.
So, there are warrants that you have to meet in order to install a stop sign, federal warrants through the manual on uniform traffic control devices. So, they have to reach a specific volume threshold, and I don't think Lamar meets that threshold.
Lamar's less than the other side streets, like Otis and Marshall?
We can go out there and do counts and get some more counts. But yeah, last time I saw counts out there, it didn't meet the threshold for stop signs. Some of those that you see stop signs at, Otis and others, may not actually need a stop sign. They may have been put in in the past, but they're there.
But it's a good thing, because they just come down Lamar and they just go to turn.
Yeah.
So it would be a good thing just to kind of look at, since all the other streets have stop signs?
Sure, we can go out there and take counts, but we're required to install them only where they meet these specific thresholds. We can't install them for traffic calming purposes.
Right, by quantity of cars going down there or whatever else? Okay, I'll keep driving down.
Any additional questions? Counselor Hoppe, then may I have a motion on this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve installation of a traffic calming device on Lamar Street between 32nd Avenue and 33rd Avenue in accordance with the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program.
Second.
Could you please raise your hand if you were the dedicated second? Okay, we have Counselor Hutchinson. Is there a discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you. That concludes the agenda items on our business agenda. We will now... Move to City Managers Matters. Mr. Goff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a special study session after this. I'll defer until staff reports under that meeting.
Okay. We'll go to City Attorney's Matters? Nothing tonight, thank you. Thank you very much. We'll go to Elected Officials Matters. And let me start with Counselor Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just would like to say that my thoughts and prayers are with the people in Turkey and Syria.
Thank you. Counselor Nosler Beck?
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. Counselor Hulteen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, this is just a little bit of a story, but I am spending a lot of time in the sauna in the last week. And I've met some of the most extraordinary people from all over the world who have moved to Wheat Ridge in the last, like, five, like, five to two years. And it's been just really wonderful to hear all the stories of why people are choosing to move to Wheat Ridge. Everything from a world champion, mixed martial arts champion, who, he and his wife realized they could live anywhere and chose to move from San Francisco and picked Wheat Ridge. But I have met people from Sri Lanka, Uganda, Mexico City, and the Czech Republic. And they are, two of them work at Enrel, and it's just, I just have been so impressed with the sort of caliber of people who are choosing to move to Wheat Ridge and why they're living here and what they're seeing in our community. And so I just encourage people, when you're out, you know, to take a second and chat with the people who are also, you know, living here and going to our rec center and learn a little bit about them, because I am really excited by what people are seeing in our community, and it's reminding me of why I love to call it home. And yeah, it's just been kind of fun. So hang out in the sauna and as you feel comfortable, chat people up and learn a little bit more about them.
Thanks so much. Counselor Dozeman?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Weaver?
I just wanted to clarify that that was the Wheat Ridge Rec Center sauna and not Rachel's backyard, just so...
Well, getting good use of city facilities, then. Great. All right, Counselor Rome?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to say thank you to staff. I saw some vehicles cleaning up some ice in my neighborhoods, much needed, and really, really appreciate it for the safety of the residents. On another note, as we all look at affordable housing and what kind of tools are in the toolbox, I've been paying attention to how many malls have been shut down over the years and what direction that's going, and looking at even strip malls at adaptive reuse, which is pretty interesting. And so I don't know if that's on staff's radar at all, but I know parking is an issue, but, and they would have to meet a lot of different criteria, including rezoning, but they're always looking at different adaptive reuses, whether it's a strip mall or a light industrial, but always trying to look at other niches of where we can keep, you know, advancing affordable housing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Where am I? Counselor Weaver? Counselor Hoppe?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say happy Valentine's Day to everybody tomorrow. And I was just really happy to have the opportunity for us to have the cross-country Boys and Girls Team here tonight, and I'm very proud of all of the things that those student athletes have accomplished this season. So, thanks.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Stites?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Hoppe, for bringing those guys in tonight. That was really cool. I was talking to Coach Chamberlain a little bit. He was the cross-country coach when I was at Wheat Ridge as well, so I was too slow to run on cross-country. But definitely enjoyed talking with them a little bit. Last week, I had the opportunity to go to the Wheat Ridge Theater Company and be part of the ribbon cutting ceremony there. We've got a bunch of ribbon cuttings coming up the next few weeks at a bunch of different places, so we were just definitely a hotbed for business and retail and new restaurants. We've got a lot of new restaurants opening up. So tomorrow's Valentine's Day, guys. Tomorrow's Valentine's Day. So if you'd like to stay married or with your girlfriend, you might want to buy them something. And if you can find it, you should buy it at Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. And I want to sort of echo what Mayor Protem Stites said about new businesses coming. It seems like, you know, I think we're cutting about four ribbons on new businesses this week, and we did a couple last week, and so it's great to see new entrepreneurs opening up in our community. We had a robust turnout for my coffee with the mayor last Saturday morning. I want to thank all the folks who come by to Vanola's on the second Saturday at 9:00 and sit down and talk. We have a very engaging conversation. I want to thank all those folks for coming up. I want to echo that we've, it looks like we've got some snow coming into the region on midweek this week, and we do have a shoveling ordinance, but more than that, I think everyone hopefully will want to go out and make their sidewalks where we have sidewalks. And I know we don't have sidewalks throughout the whole city, but where we do, we want to shovel and make it safe to walk in our city. I want to thank so much Coach Chamberlain for bringing his cross-country team from Wheat Ridge. It's great to see these young folks come in and visit with us for a few minutes. They have great, outstanding athletic ability, but even more than that is the citizenship that they bring to us. And that's really a credit to the parents and to the teachers and the members of the community that we have these young folks with us, and I want to thank them for coming today. Valentine's Day, as everyone's reminding us, is tomorrow. I want to hope everyone takes the appropriate steps to make sure that they are thankful and appreciate the love that they have in their homes and their communities, so. And with that, we have lots of activity happening in and around our streets. Please be careful and drive slowly through our communities so that everyone makes it home safely. So is there any more business to come before our council? We will have a study session starting after our meeting, a special study session. With that, we'll adjourn our meeting and convene our study session just shortly. Thank you.
Already? Okay. Okay, I would like to call to order the special study session for the city of Wheat Ridge for February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. We have two agenda items. We have item number one is the Let's Talk Resident Engagement Survey Program Update. Item number two is the Draft Two Thousand and Twenty-three Resident Survey. We will begin our meeting, as we do most of our meetings, with public comment. If you would like to speak on either of the agenda items, you may come forward now. I don't believe I have anyone signed up to speak, but we're getting the... We don't have anyone signed up to speak, but if you're here and would like to speak, you may do so now. And if you're online, you may speak also, but I don't see anyone raising their hand. So we will move past our public's right to speak and go to item number one on the Let's Talk Resident Engagement Program Update. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this?
We do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ashley Holland is here, our Neighborhood Engagement Specialist, is going to present our seventh and eighth neighborhood update, correct?
That is right.
Okay, Ms. Holland.
All right. Thank you so much, Mayor and City Council, for having us tonight. As Patrick said, I am Ashley Holland, the Neighborhood Engagement Specialist. We have Jeff Hurt here as well, who's our Senior Neighborhood Planner, and we are the staff members responsible for the Let's Talk Resident Engagement Program. So... Here we go. Tonight, we are sharing some information from our most recent neighborhoods, which is Neighborhood Seven and Eight, and some general program updates and our work plan update as well. So as a quick reminder, the Let's Talk Program splits Wheat Ridge into ten neighborhoods. And here you can see the status of all of our neighborhoods. So we've been at this since two thousand and twenty, and we have come a long way. We... Previously, we completed engagement blitzes in Applewood, Anderson Park, Bel Air, East Wheat Ridge, Fruit Dale, and Leple Manor. And then, just in the last month, we completed our engagement blitzes in Paramount Park and Southeast Wheat Ridge. So a quick reminder on what is an engagement blitz? So we actually split our engagement into two rounds. During our first round, we head into a neighborhood and we ask really open-ended questions. What do you love about your neighborhood? What's working? What's not? We look for common trends and themes in responses from residents, and then we speak to our colleagues across the city, in any department, to find out what can we do to respond to what we've heard. We create a list of responsive actions, and then that's when we come back for round two. So in round two, we present residents with that list. We have them weigh in and prioritize, and then we come to council like we are right now. So we reach our residents in a variety of different ways. So we have high-tech, low-tech, in-person, virtual. We try and make sure that our residents, however they prefer to engage, whether they may have access to technology or not, and their busy schedules, we want to make sure that folks know that we want to hear from them and have ample opportunity to tell us what they think. And so in our blitz reports, which you received copies of, we do have an appendix with all the different ways that we've reached out to folks. And it has paid off. We have had about sixteen hundred residents participate so far in these first eight neighborhoods, and the map shows the percent of each neighborhood's population that has participated. So these engagement blitz reports, as I mentioned, you all receive them ahead of time, and for anyone who might be listening at home, these are always available on whatsupwetridge.com so you can take a look. The first twenty-ish pages summarize what we heard, and then there's a huge appendix with all of the detailed comments from your neighbors. So in Paramount Park, when we talked to them in round one, we heard a few common themes come up, and the top kind of topics that came up were traffic and speeding, public safety, and bike and pedestrian access and safety. So when we came to them with our action items, these are the top-ranked action items in Paramount Park. So the first is improving West Thirty-Eighth Avenue in between Kipling and Youngfield for walking and biking. This is actually the second time we've brought this action item to a neighborhood, and in the Applewood Blitz, it was also the number-one action item. The next two action items are very specific to the park itself. So, you know, Paramount Park is the name of the neighborhood, but there's also an individual city park in that neighborhood. The second action item, second-ranked, is providing security features on the south end of the park. So we heard from some residents that there are folks living in their vehicles on the south end of the park and some perceived illegal activity. And then the third-ranked action item is to build a barrier of some kind, a fence or a landscape buffer between the park and Kipling. In Southeast Wheat Ridge, we actually heard very similar common themes that we heard in Paramount Park, but just kind of in a different order. So we heard that bike and pedestrian access and safety is very important, traffic and speeding again, and then public safety. And then of the action items in Southeast Wheat Ridge, the top-ranked was targeted traffic calming on West Twenty-Ninth Avenue. And that was kind of specific to... Between Wadsworth and Kendall because Kendall is where the consistent sidewalks on Twenty-Ninth End. The second-ranked action item in Southeast Wheat Ridge was enhancing the neighborhood parks. So Southeast Wheat Ridge has Hayward Park, Stites Park, and the Richards Heart Estate. And so we came to residents and said, what do you think about making enhancements to these parks, and what specifically would you like to see? So that we're able to go back to our park staff and tell them what we heard from our residents. And then finally, number three was to increase resources for the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program. All right. So if you remember, after each blitz, we update an overall work plan. So it looks at all the action items that we've asked all of our neighborhoods so far, and you receive this in advance, but once again, you can find it on whatsupWetRidge if you are listening from home. So this is just a quick visual of what that document looks like to kind of help orient you. So there is the action item, a quick description. The colorful middle column has every neighborhood that we've asked that particular question and how it's ranked, and the level of support we've heard from that neighborhood. A quick background, and then the status of that action item. So I wanted to highlight a few things that are happening. So some ongoing work plan items that have some updates in the coming year. We have community engagement in two thousand and twenty-three for a couple of big projects. So one is the aesthetic improvements to the Youngfield Corridor, and then another is the bike and pedestrian improvements to West Thirty-Eighth Avenue in between Kipling and Youngfield. So stay tuned for that if you're interested in engaging on those topics more. We also are pursuing some additional funding for the West Thirty-Fifth Avenue Street Improvement Project, and that was a project, a work plan item that came out of Let's Talk East Wheat Ridge. We have expanded dumpster and cleanup days with a partnership with Local Works, and we are, as someone mentioned earlier, evaluating improvements to the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program and coming back to you soon. And then we also have some things that are done. We've completed some things. So you all passed the ADU ordinance last summer. That was a hot topic in several neighborhoods. Same for expanding bulk plane rules. Parks just finished improvements to the Otis Street Trailhead and a playground replacement at Aprilbacher Park. Those were both action items in Leple Manor. And then you all recently adopted the Affordable Housing Strategy and Action Plan, and housing choice and affordability was a topic in many neighborhoods. So again, this is... These are just a few highlights there. You can look at the work plan for all the statuses and all the different action items. So what is next? We're excited. We're heading to the last two neighborhoods. We have North I Seventy and Lutheran Crown Hill coming up. Both of the whatsupWetRidge project pages are live, so if you happen to live in these neighborhoods and you're listening, you can subscribe on whatsupWetRidge now, and we'll do our official kickoff in March. But we are really excited about these neighborhoods. In North I Seventy, we know that there are a lot of new residents, some folks that have moved into new development near the Ward Road Station, and so we're going in ready to conduct our regular blitz and then also connect these residents with general city programs that they might need to know about, and welcome them to the city and connect them with neighbors who have lived in that area for a while. We also know that for Lutheran Crown Hill, residents are likely to be interested in the Lutheran Legacy Campus. So we'll connect them with the master plan that happened over there and then keep them up to date with what's happening. Finally, we expect to pause neighborhood engagement for a little bit after those blitzes are done and focus on the comprehensive plan. So we're excited to use the... Leverage the relationship that we've built across these neighborhoods with the residents and then also use these tactics and tools and outreach and engagement to create a more robust and launch the comprehensive plan in a really great way. So we've certainly seen that talking to residents in this neighborhood-focused way has been really helpful, but we've seen a lot of overarching themes come up, so we're ready to address that in the comprehensive plan. Those are the big updates, and please let us know if you have any questions or comments.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Holland. I will open it up to questions from council. Who's going to go first? Counselor Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ashley. You sound like Wheat Ridge's like number-one cheerleader with your enthusiasm. Thank you for bringing that to our neighborhoods. I have just, I guess, more comments than anything. I just want to express gratitude for you and Jeff for all this work. I... As an elected official, like having access to this information has made it so much more efficient and helped me serve my community because I have such a deeper understanding of what's important to them, and so just thank you. It's been a lot of work, and it's exciting to see, like, neighborhood by neighborhood getting checked off, but I reference these actually a lot. There are sometimes a lot to get through because you guys are doing it, but it's just been incredibly helpful. It's just great to hear from our community that way. And I'm excited to hear that you're thinking about the transition into the comprehensive plan, and just something that I find myself thinking about a lot. You know, we've built a lot of civic infrastructure, and we have more two-way communication with our community, and so as we get ready for the comp plan update, one of the things that's just really at the forefront of my mind is how do we get people ready to think about, like, these big visions? Like, the neighborhood planning is a little bit more of like the short-to-medium-term thinking, and how do we, you know, how are we taking advantage of this communication infrastructure to prime people to start thinking big and so that when we get that planning started, they show up at the beginning bringing their big ideas? A lot of times, comp plans, you know, start and kind of build momentum, and we really want, you know, as many voices at the table. So I would love at some point to, you know, hear from you guys, you know, like, how do we take all this investment and catalyze it to inform a really good comp plan? So I just want to thank you guys for your work.
Thank you for that, and we are currently already discussing that and should be coming back to you soon with some cool ideas.
Thank you. Counselor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like to echo some of what Councilwoman Hulteen said. This work that you guys have done is exceptional and greatly appreciated, and yes, it is so much more helpful to have guiding documents along with, like, our resident surveys and the specific area information, and I appreciate that. Another thing is that, you know, when we first started looking at this project at the very beginning, there was a lot of concern that it was just going to be a lot of talk and no action, and we said, well, we're going to have to figure out how to walk and chew gum at the same time. And you guys have done an excellent job with those marching orders, and I appreciate it, and I am happy that our last two neighborhoods are coming online, and then we'll be able to move forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Potem Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'll just echo again what Counselor Hoppe and Hulteen said. I think you guys have done a fantastic job, and I think as we were coming out of the neighborhood revitalization strategy, trying to envision what this was going to look like was a little bit, I think, weird for all of us. I don't know if weird's a good word or not, but weird, yeah, I'll go with that. But you guys have done a fantastic job kind of making it into a reality, and I think what Ms. Hulteen said is, you know, we get a chance to kind of look back at that feedback. You know, as somebody who walked all the neighborhoods in my district as I was running and talking to people, I see the same themes coming up in what you guys have... So nothing's a big surprise, but having that data that's concrete and sometimes those little statements from people as they're going through. And specifically, for this neighborhood, for Paramount Park, that improvement to make the park a little bit safer, buffering from maybe the soccer fields onto Kipling, that's been stated by several people a few times, so that's definitely something I think we should look at. But it's also really cool to see the list of things that we've ticked off as we've gone through here, and as we were talking about the ballot question coming up for November, how many things that we're looking at to be on that ballot question that are from this? So West Thirty-Eighth and different things like that. So thank you to you and Jeff, and I hope we continue. There was a question, I'm not sure if you guys saw it on Wheat Ridge Speaks, about the number of respondents. Can you clarify the one hundred and twenty-seven responses that turns into three hundred and two or...
Yes, I can clarify that. So the number of individuals in Paramount Park that participated were one hundred and sixty-seven, so that is taking out any duplicates between round one and round two that we could find. So if the same individual answered both surveys, we, you know, take out one of those so that we don't overblow the numbers. So it was one hundred and sixty-seven individuals that participated in the blitz as a whole. One hundred and twenty-seven took the first-round survey, so that is one of the numbers she's referencing. Three hundred and two is the number of open-ended question responses. So an individual doesn't have to comment on an open-ended thing because sometimes, if you make them required, people will say, no comment. So we don't make that required. So three hundred and two individual responses to the three questions. So some people, out of that one hundred and twenty-seven, some people answer all three, some people don't answer any of them, a combo thereof. And so, yeah, sorry for any confusion there, but that's what those numbers mean.
Great. Well, thank you. You guys have done a great job.
Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I want to echo my counsel's comments. Thank you so much. This is a tremendous amount of effort of compiling all this data, and we do see some trends. We see some unique things specific to neighborhoods. What's interesting is that, you know, some of these neighborhoods actually cross district lines. Have you found that... I think, you know, I can make my own assumptions, but have you found that since you've done this, that maybe some of the neighborhoods are becoming a little more unified than they were before this, of having that identity?
That's an interesting question. I don't know if I can answer, you know, what it was before, but I certainly see there are residents who, anecdotally, who will come up to us and say, I didn't know my neighborhood was called Southeast Wheat Ridge. Now I have something to, you know, call my area. And so there is something to a brand and a name, and so we've seen some of that in, like, neighborhood-specific pride that I think people kind of lean into, or even the, why is my neighborhood called that? And, you know, for those of you who know, the NRS process had lots of ways that people identified their neighborhood, and we tried to find some common themes and make sure that the sizes of the neighborhoods weren't too off balance. But we have seen some of those things within these neighborhoods.
I think this is a really powerful tool that I hope we can continue in the future, that we can, you know, poll some of the neighborhoods and residents, you know, when we have some questions. This has really laid a great foundation, groundwork for our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Nosler Beck.
Thanks for all the incredible work. This is, like, just so fun to be able to see it all in one spot. I'm really excited about where you all are still headed before we head into the comprehensive plan. The North I Seventy area is a really special part of Wheat Ridge that has some specific things that make it sometimes a challenging area to reach out to the community, and I just am here as a resource if you need any help there, but just so that everybody is aware with how we butt up against Arvada or on the other side of I Seventy. It's hard for people to even know what jurisdiction they live in because they may have a postal code that says that they are Arvada, but then they actually are in Wheat Ridge. And we realized a lot of that in some of our conversations about housing that we had up there, and then also with the noise and bottling plant up there. So just, it might take a little extra effort, and I'm sure Counselor Dozeman is happy to help with reaching out to some of the folks we know up there to spread the word.
Yeah, we would absolutely appreciate and love that because, yeah, just even looking at the boundaries up there, you can see how confusing it would be for people.
Yeah, and then also, I would say that it's one of the places that I hear from residents most frequently, asking, you know, who is the person I reach out to about the sidewalk up there for connectivity and things like that? I just also would, you know, encourage you all to maybe do some door-knocking up there or whatever, just because people are in that situation, wondering who's who. And there's a lot of new development, and people have been there for a long time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion with... Yes, follow-up.
When is... When are you all going to be up there in...
We're going to kick off in March.
In March? Okay, thank you.
Additional discussion? Questions? All right. Well, thank you very much for a great report and a great program. I think you guys have really made great progress in sort of ferreting out a lot of information from our citizens, and great to have the last two coming on board this year, and then in the comp plan, when we talk about what happens, you know, over the next years and years and years. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Okay. We will go to our second agenda item. This is a discussion on our... And a draft for the Two Thousand and Twenty-three Resident Survey. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mary Ann, you gonna sit back here? She's right behind me. Mary Ann Schilling, our Assistant City Manager, is going to ask council for some consensus on at least the policy questions that are within our biannual, biannual if I'm saying that right, resident survey.
All right. Great, thank you. Yes, as a reminder, this is our biannual resident survey time, so our last survey was completed in two thousand and twenty-one, and the goal of this resident survey is to assess resident satisfaction with community care characteristics and amenities and to evaluate the quality of Wheat Ridge services. It's also really helpful to further understand the residents' priorities regarding Wheat Ridge services, and we really do use this survey as a tool to help inform staff and policy decisions, and as you know, we tie it really closely to the budget process. So we really want our residents to know that we're listening. And so for those who need a refresher, the survey is, it goes out to four thousand five hundred randomly-selected residents. It's seven pages long, and the randomization piece is super important because that's what makes the survey statistically significant. So we do weigh the survey more heavily in underrepresented areas like multifamily units, and that's what really helps to make it statistically significant. And as a reminder, we do keep the survey pretty similar year over year, especially in the base piece. Where we make the changes is typically in the policy section, where we, you know, come up with the questions that are a little bit more topical at that moment in time with council. So for timeline, what we do is we will have a postcard and a pre-survey notification letter that will go out later in February. Following the notification, a survey will be mailed out twice to the resident, and similar to years past, we will have the option for someone to fill the survey out online, but it is not an opt-in survey. So to be clear, this is something that you are randomly selected, but you do get an access code on your survey so you can fill it out online. And for the first time, we are actually offering a Spanish-language option for our residents to be able to do as well. So typically, like I said, we keep things the same year over year, but the policy questions are where we have the changes. We kept it the same for sustainability and our questions related to homelessness, but we do have some questions on here related to a ballot measure. And so what I'd like to do, I'm going to pass it over to Mr. Goff after I read these off, but I want to... I'm going to read off some questions for you all, and the hope that I'm trying to get from you all is, you know, do these questions meet the intent of council? Do you have any feedback, any wordsmithing? So that is my ask of you tonight, is related specifically to these ballot questions, and then we'll have Patrick kind of give some follow-up on some polling pieces as well. So the first question that... I'm going to read the whole thing out, but it's going to be related to the ballot, and it says, "The city of Wheat Ridge is considering a ballot measure to place on the two thousand and twenty-three ballot that would ask voters to continue the current temporary point-five-cent sales tax increase that was approved in two thousand and sixteen to fund improvements to Anderson Park, Wadsworth Boulevard, street improvements to the Wheat Ridge Ward Commuter Rail Station, and the off-ramp into Clear Creek Crossing. This extension of the sales tax would fund priority projects across the city that do not have an identified funding source at this time. The city is seeking feedback on the following projects that could be funded through the extension of this current sales tax rate. How important, if at all, are each of the following projects to you?" And the response options here are essential, very important, somewhat important, not at all important, or don't know. And the options are: recreation center expansion, sidewalks along Thirty-Eighth Avenue from Youngfield to Harlan, sidewalks along Thirty-Eighth Avenue from Youngfield to Kipling only, sidewalks along Thirty-Eighth Avenue from Wadsworth to Harlan only, wider sidewalks along Forty-fourth Avenue from Ward to Kipling, improvements on Forty-fourth Avenue, including new signals and pedestrian crossings between Kipling and Ward, sidewalks along Youngfield Street between Thirty-Eighth and Forty-fourth Avenue, sidewalks and bike lanes on Thirty-second Avenue from Kipling to Wadsworth, sidewalk gap improvements through the city with emphasis on area near transit and schools, and then finally drainage and floodplain infrastructure improvements throughout the city. So that's question number one. Question number two here is related to the length of time for a sales tax extension, and that is, "In two thousand and sixteen, voters approved a twelve-year temporary sales tax increase which yielded thirty-three million dollars in funds to fund four improvement projects. How long, if at all, would you feel comfortable extending the current temporary half-cent sales tax rate to fund priority projects throughout the city? Ten years, yielding approximately forty-five million; fifteen years, yielding approximately sixty million; twenty years, yielding approximately seventy-five million; not at all, or don't know." So those are the big ballot questions. Just want to make sure that we're capturing city council's intent, but beforehand, I'm going to pass it over to Patrick to talk about what we have available, or do you want to go through that first? Do that first. It's a big... These are big questions, and then Patrick will discuss how it relates to polling for these questions.
Okay, I've got some questions from council. Can we move to a few questions? So Counselor Hoppe.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just my comments on the wordsmithing piece. I wonder if we're using the word "half" instead of zero-point-five in the half-cent, if that... If... I just can't remember how we did it in the... I think we used the word "half" in the ballot measure rather than the zero-point-five, but... Or we did zero-point-five and did slash the word "half," but I feel like the word "half" instead of zero-point-five will... I think it'll make more sense to some people. Some people are not decimal people. And then the only other thing I wanted to ask is, in question twenty-three, so the way that reads is that it sounds as though we've been collecting this half-cent for twelve years, which we have not. So it was... So it was for 12 years or up to $33 million, whichever came first. And so we've completed that in eight years? And I think that it may be important to try to tell that story in that question somehow that people, so when we go to ask them and they see 20 years, that it kind of takes the sticker shock off of it because we did a 12-year in eight years. So if there's some way we could word it to, to give that information in that question?
Counselor Weaver, did you have your hand? So Counselor Weaver is up next, and then Counselor Hulte.
I'd like to go back to 22. I, I think it's, it's a really hard one to take in all of that information in one question. And, and so I, I just want to break down the different pieces of it so I understand. You're, the first part is saying, "We did this and this is what we paid for." And then the second part is saying, "We have these other underfunded projects that we'd like you to comment on." Is that, okay, those, that is not abundantly clear. And so I, I realize that they, all of that information needs to be said, but I, I would like something that really clarifies because I think a lot of people may not know, "Oh, that stuff was done," you know? So I would just like, I, I'd really, I'd like some wordsmithing around clarifying that this was passed. And then the additional thing that I'd like to comment on with 23 is, is to the comment that was just said about the time period of what that took. Because in 23, you're asking people, just like we sat in the, in the, in the retreat and, you know, it's like monopoly money, right? Like what is $60 million versus $45 million versus $85 million when you're talking about, you know, like, like a stop sign? How much does a stop sign cost? I have no idea. So if that could be connected with the time period somehow so that people understand that, you know, obviously the more money that we're allowed to, the longer we can take the sales tax, the more projects will get done. Does that make sense? So, so I guess starting from what we want to try and get out of these, to come back and kind of wordsmith that first one a bit more so that the second one just makes more sense in terms of, of, and, and you might even, well, I guess it doesn't matter to put how much the other, the past stuff costs since it's, it's not really relative at this point, but some way to explain, gosh, if we want to get all these things done, because I, of course, would get that survey and be like, "I want all these things done," right? Anyway, that's, those would be my comments on those questions. Does that help?
Yeah.
Thank you. Counselor Hulte?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So a little bit of echoing here, I'm going to start with the easier one. So I agree that 23 is a little bit confusing about when taxes start and stop. And to Councilmember Weaver's point around connecting, you know, more money, more projects with the options that it almost suggests flipping them, right? Like start with $45 million, which is a 10-year bond, right? Like we, we realize that like the, the tenure of the bond is kind of a risk thing, but helping them understand like we're talking about how much money and then this is how much risk you take with the bond or how, how long the, the duration of the bond might be. My, my bigger concern with 22 is having read through the survey. If I, if I get this survey and I'm just Joe Average Wheat Ridge citizen, I probably don't really care that much about sidewalks on Youngfield because they're nowhere near me. So I think statistically, it's going to be really hard to know what to do with these specific locations because people are going to answer whatever location is close to them. Very few people are going to care about sidewalks that aren't in their neighborhood. So I, I think statistically, it's not going to give us very good information. I, I know in our dialogue in the retreat, we talked about sort of that each of these projects has been informed by different processes and some have longer histories than others. But I feel, I feel I would know what to do better with categorical questions like investing in complete streets and sidewalks on our main corridors such as 32nd, 38th, 44th. Invest in sidewalk gaps on our busy main arterials such as Kipling and Wadsworth. I think to do them categorical, because this is the only question in the whole survey that's like really geo-targeted and statistically, we're just not going to know what to do with it because people just, they're, they're going to answer for the sidewalks in their communities. And within this, I mean, like the rec center is a community-wide investment. So I would suggest trying to take a look at it more categorically. And I realize then it's incumbent on city staff and council to try and parse out those categories in terms of specific geographic priorities. But as we've learned through our Let's Talk program and our other surveys, you know, I think that's, that's the risk we're going to have to take or maybe that gets done through polling. So those are my, I think those are my, oh, and also maybe just identifying in the question that these projects were selected because they've been identified as priorities through other, by our community, through community engagement. Can we just make that one question five pages long? I'm kidding.
We'll have an audio question. Okay, let's start on this side of the table with Counselor Nosler Beck.
I think I'm echoing a lot of what's been said already, but just, I really like the idea of going at it with the categorical instead of the specifics because my first reaction when I was reviewing this was just, you know, I sure hope people who live in District Four get this survey. And I, I still want to hear from folks on, you know, how they feel about 44th and Ward to Kipling and, and all of those aspects. But I think for the purpose of this, what we're trying to accomplish with this, potentially taking this to the ballot, I think it's important for us to hear from like how connectivity works and are they grasping that and are they seeing that as an issue? And, and we heard that tonight that they are. And so just, that's, that's my feedback there, just fully support that. But then I think one of the ways that I would like to see the, the 22 re-drafted is like really focusing on the efficacy of how Wheat Ridge utilized that initial round of, of half-cent sales tax. So like, it, it's really positive in tone. You know, we can, we can already start kind of pitching this idea with, with the first part of, of this question. I think that we've done this before, it worked. Anyway, that's, I, I think I'm echoing what has been said already before, but I think it's about we're really effective if we're given the responsibility with this extra sales, this extra sales tax. And then the last thing that is just a really great suggestion that I've heard from some people, the clerk, is that I think it is really helpful to maybe provide even an example in parentheses next to like what a .5 sales tax looks like. So on a $10 purchase, that is, you know? You did the math.
Five cents.
Five cents, yeah. Oh, I can do that math too. It's five cents. But just, just so that people, we can, we can oversimplify in, in this version. When we go to the ballot, we're not going to be able to, so.
Yeah, and, and to speak to that a little bit too, I mean, you want to be very careful on a statistically ran, or a scientific survey not to lead your respondents in any way. So, you know, it's like, oh, we did great with our first sales tax, so you should support this.
Well, I guess, okay, so I said that, I said that very, I, I guess I just totally was saying like, please lead in that. But I don't think it's, it's, but sticking to, you know, how efficient that was, I think is, you know, okay.
Somewhat leading.
Somewhat, okay. We can, we don't have to, you don't have to use that.
And just so you know, we're, yeah, and I, all of your comments are great and I think we need to make some adjustments, but Polco, 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 Polco? Polco, the firm that's doing the survey, you know, they'll, they'll help us make sure that we're not leading, they have leading questions and they'll tell us if we, if we're going down that road or not. So, anyway.
Thank you. Counselor Ohm?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with my co-counselor, Hulte, about the category. I think it'd be more appropriate because it's kind of, it's kind of like everybody gets a vote and, you know, you vote for your own district and, and I think it'd be, I think it would be better to, to do what she had suggested for having that as a category instead of just saying, "What's your favorite area?" One, some other thoughts that I had, and I know you're not trying to lead, is that when I, when I looked at all the different projects that we were looking at, apart from this, my thoughts were, you know, you know, how can you even come remotely close to, to doing some of these? There's just so much projects and we, and there really is so little money. And then when I start looking at this question, I'm just thinking out loud like, you know, 10 years equals 45 million, you know? What, you know, what would, what would 70, what would 45 million be worth in that same 45 million today? What would that, what would it worth in 20 years? You know, so are these amounts that we're suggesting, is it, you know, the cost, as the cost has gone up, you know? We look at Wadsworth and how much it's gone up percentage-wise with inflation. Is it, is it depreciating in value the longer we go on with these 20 years? And I also think long-term, if we were to do some type of development with the, the old Lutheran Hospital, does this kind of hamstring us of, you know, we're caught in this bond that's for 20 years and it's really only giving us a half a percent and we need much more than that? What are the, what are other options do we have? Can we go back to the voters and say, "Hey, we, we have some much larger projects that require much, much more than, than this half cent?" Or should we just consider keeping it a lower term of years? Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Dozeman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I was going to ask if Polco has reviewed this language already? Okay, and, and they indicated that this would be appropriate for the like statistical analysis that we're looking for?
Yes, yes, they were totally great with the wording and they're happy to make any adjustments based on the feedback we received today.
Okay, I would tend to agree that maybe broader, more generic questions on 22 might be more appropriate, although I'm wondering if for specificity purposes or statistical purposes that we need more specificity as, as far as which projects would come out on top, which would kind of drive the direction of us for the actual ballot initiative. So I kind of, I understand why you, you framed it in that manner. And for 23, again, I don't, I don't want to necessarily lead the public, but indicating that, that we, that we've, we're, we've paid it off earlier, so we're not to that 12-year mark yet. Because it could be 10 years yielding approximately $45 million, but it, we could reach that amount prior to that 10 years. And so I think kind of giving that background knowledge isn't necessarily leading, but just indicating that it, it could be paid off sooner. And I don't know how to frame that, like that's not my wheelhouse. I'll leave that up to you and to the Polco. But I do think that it indicates to, to our residents that, that we're doing really well, generating tax revenue and that investing into these projects are doing what we're intending them to do, which is bring businesses and attract people into our community to either live here or spend money here. Thank you.
Thank you. We've got, I've got a few more counselors to speak that haven't spoken. We're going to go to Counselor Hutchinson now and then Mayor Protem Stites and then we'll circle back.
Thank you, Mayor. Just reading this, if I was a voter who voted in 2016, the temporary tax increase was for 12 years, correct? That would take till 2028. So all the projects that are listed though aren't done. Wadsworth Boulevard is not done, okay? And improvements to streets in Wheat Ridge, that's not all done. So we already have projects that aren't done, but then we want to possibly increase a tax increase for so many years. When would the years start? From 2023 or 2028 or when?
Yeah, if council decides to go forward with a question on the November ballot this year, the tax, the tax increase would start January 1st of 2024.
And so what about the people that voted thinking they voted for this temporary tax increase of, you know, .5 cent for 12 years? Okay, so it wasn't for 12 years, now we're changing it, you know?
No, we're asking, we're asking the voters. We're not changing it without asking the voters.
No, I know. But it was set up when they voted for the 12 years.
Or 38 and a half million, whatever comes first.
Or what?
38 and a half million.
38 and a half million? Okay, so that needs to be clear. Well, maybe not right now with all the other years that you're adding on and things like that, especially when you're addressing, Wadsworth is not done at all. So, you know, but I just think the simpler it is, the better, you know? Because people decide they don't want to vote.
Yep, we agree. You've all added a lot of suggestions that might make it simpler for us, so we're, we're listening to all those. I, I totally agree. It needs to be very simple. The ballot question needs to be as simple as possible. And that's kind of what we're testing here. So we could put some more descriptive language, I think, Judy, in question 22 that maybe explains some of the, some of the things you mentioned about the, the first tax increase and the, and the 38 and a half million and the 12 versus eight years. So we'll, we'll look at all that.
Yeah, good.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Stites?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not going to say anything new. I think everybody's kind of beat it to death already. But yeah, I think putting in that backstory, kind of where Judy was going with that is, I think, you know, just explaining that, you know, we hit the threshold sooner, you know, that's a, you know, obviously that's leading, I guess, to say that it's a win, but it's a win, right? Like we, we hit it early. It's still factual, but it is like, yeah, but I think it is important that it's specified out in there somewhere, maybe even in a blurb, like a paragraph before the questions are even asked about it or something. And I agree with Councilwoman Hoppe that the .5 cent sales tax, you know, if you're breezing by that real quick, that looks like five cent sales tax. That's a lot different than a .5 percent sales tax. So spelling it out or doing hash marks or something and, or parentheses that, that say "half cent" or something, I think would really help. Other than that, I do think that if we can take the specificity, whatever, the specifics out on that, on question 22 and go to a more broader, I think that'll give us better data because I do think that people will vote for their own neighborhood basically and don't want to spend money across, across town. So other than that, I, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Counselor Hoppe?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to caution to not be too broad in the categories because I, I think that if, if you scroll further through the, the packet, like past the memo into where the, where it's actually laid out and what it looks like in the survey that people are reading, it makes a little bit more sense than kind of how, how you read it like in the memo because it's got the lines and then I think it makes a little more sense. So I would just caution that we don't go too bulky, category bulky. But, and I'm trying to remember, it was a very long time ago and I think I was like the only one that was part of drafting that language last time, but we may have said "one half of one cent" is what we said. And I, I think that that might be, instead of saying "half cent," "one half of one cent" is I think how we did it. And I think that made more, more sense when we wrote that ballot language down.
And I'd like to say, yes, that is what we, we use. And one of the things that I didn't mention when describing the, the survey report that we receive is that we do get district-by-district results. And so if that is helpful... do get district-by-district results. And so if that is helpful for specificity or less specificity, when we get the resident survey results, we do get to see how people voted per district, which is helpful information.
Okay. Additional discussion on this item? Uh, Counselor Hutchinson?
Are we talking about the survey yet? The questions and all that?
In, in addition to the, this, this question?
This?
Sure. Yeah, anything about the survey is open for discussion.
Okay.
That's a good question. I don't have the, the number of zip codes that are included, but we, what we do is we give Polco our GIS data for the city. So it's geolocated with all the addresses. And then I have, I personally have the map of all the randomized addresses to make sure that it is accurately and spread out appropriately throughout the city.
Correct, and they, they take that into account when they randomize, randomize? Yeah. Randomize.
Some people I've spoken to, um, south of 30th Second said that, anyway, for a while they weren't getting the connections and things like that because their mail is delivered by Edgewater.
Yeah.
When it's delivered.
When it's delivered, yeah.
Well, that was back then.
And they use a different methodology to, to, for this, not, not the same as a mailing, bulk mailing. So it's different.
Uh, Counselor Hultein?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, uh, so to move on from 23 to 24, make, make some progress. Uh, so the question there around the homelessness is a problem. Um, I, I feel like since we last surveyed, the city's done a tremendous amount of work, um, on All Friends to try and address homelessness and the impact of homelessness in the community. And I'm just wondering if we don't wanna question that's, that's gauging if, if the work is making a difference, if it's, I guess it feels like a subjective question to me. And given how much, you know, we've got, we've got a navigator and a housing navigator and we're doing, you know, policing things that are helping connect our community better with resources and we're doing cleanups and all sorts of stuff, is the question about, are we going in the right direction or is it just trying to get a pinpoint of how, how much does our community perceive it as a problem still?
Yeah, and I think that's exactly it. So what we're doing is trying to track it over time. And so, you know, we can say, "Yes, it's still going on. We don't need the question anymore." Um, or we could ask it differently, but then we kinda lose the longitudinal piece of it that makes it really helpful. Um, in total, we have about three lines worth of space additional. So we could add another question. We could also find a different place to plug it in and a different piece of the question to kinda get the, like, how are you seeing, like, our response to homelessness and have them rank the quality of that along with how they, we have this question now. And so adding it, we, we've done it for a couple of questions where we kind of like plugged in a different one to kinda get to a different angle of what our residents might be thinking. And so I would say add, we could add another line related to our navigation services and how you think they're doing. Um, but I, I would caution against rewording the current question or taking it out entirely.
Okay. Um, I, uh, I defer to staff on that. I mean, it's the information that you, you find helpful. Um, I mean, I, I feel like the work we've done is, is making a positive impact in our community. And this is an opportunity to find out if others think that. Um, but I don't wanna mess with statistical stuff too, so, thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Weaver?
Just on that, uh, that is a question I think would be really interesting geographically if we had an additional question on how people perceive, because I, I'm not sure that people necessarily know about the navigator and all of the great programs that we've been doing, but it would be interesting and, and maybe it just, that's just the way my brain works. But, but people's perception of, because I have corridors that I drive through every day where I'm sort of thinking about the people that are, that are on, in those intersections and, and that might be an interesting feedback on the areas with hotels versus some of the other corridor areas, um, on perception. I, I'm gonna leave it up to you. I just thought it was interesting when, when Rachel said it.
Of homelessness?
Yeah, of our, right, because, because we know we're, we're, we're doing things and we have the statistics in our city to, to, right, and, and we have this original question, which we don't wanna mess with, but it might be interesting to understand that question with the perception of geographically, are things changing for people, if that makes sense? Because the, the first question might say, "Well, yeah, homelessness is still a problem", right? Regardless of what we're doing with it, they might perceive it as that. But a question on, on, and I, and I don't know what that question would look like, but, but just something on their perception of the corridors. Because for a while, when you drove down Kipling, you know, towards the highway, there was just a lot of perceived, there's perceived homelessness, there's actual homelessness. Does that make sense? Right? And then there's this, I, I just, I'm just throwing out an idea. If we have space, it might be interesting, because I agree that the other question 22 won't be geographically significant because of the reasons that, that Rachel said, because people will put their bias of where they live in the, in that answer.
And is the, the question more about the perception of how that navigation program is doing?
No, the percen- the, the, the answer would be, are we doing a better job as the city in these various corridors? Because I think a lot of the perception of homelessness is how we're addressing it, is, is this multi-pronged approach, right? We're dealing with hotels and we're dealing with, with, uh, the, the navigators and Ri- and we're not dealing with the navigators, you know what I mean? Um, all of these things are making an impact on people living in these areas and moving around these areas. And I'm, I'm just kind of curious, I've noticed things changing and I'm just kind of curious if, because that goes into people's perception of the first question, which is, is homelessness a problem, if that makes sense? Maybe I'm, I just thought that was an interesting question. I, I will stop.
Counselor Hutchinson?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Um, the whole survey is subjective, right? I mean, how do you feel? I mean, question like 25, how important to you, if at all, is blah, blah, blah? 26, how important to you, if at all, is that the city, blah, blah, blah? The whole survey is subjective. I don't see a problem with asking the question of 24, to what degree, if at all, is homelessness a problem in the city of Wheat Ridge? Because as it is, people just don't stay in their house. They get in their car, their bike, whatever, they're riding around Wheat Ridge and they can see what it is. It's just not in one corner or something. It's up to them. If you send them a survey, they have a right to be able to, um, answer the question. And I think the whole survey's subjective, so I think it's open.
Yeah, it's people's opinions. Uh, Counselor Stites?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, to go back to what Ms. Weaver was saying, maybe if I would add a question or like a 24 and a half type of question, do you feel that the city is addressing homelessness in a proper way or something like that? Maybe, um, you know, whatever, however you wanna break that down. So we find out maybe if, um, yeah, well, I mean, corridors and neighborhoods, I guess, just in general, like, do you see that the city's actually taking action to help solve this or, you know, something like that? Um, I don't know how to wordsmith that question necessarily, but that might give us an idea if people actually see the results of the things that we're doing. So, um, I guess that's just my suggestion.
Uh, Counselor Ohm?
Um, question number eight, would it be possible just to ask what are the condition of side, like, condition of sidewalks? Cause we, can you hear me?
No, not really.
So, um, is that better?
A little bit, yeah.
Okay. Um, so on, on question number eight, it specifically asks, what is the condition of streets? Could we add con- condition of sidewalks?
Cause it, one of the- Thought it was on there somewhere, no?
It says ease of walking, but like, you could be on a street where there's no sidewalks and-
Yeah. Um, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll look at that, see if we, where it fits in the best. I think that's a good, good comment.
Okay. I don't see any other hands up.
Kinda wanna shift gears just-
Okay, let's shift some gears then.
Just a little bit. Um, so shift gears from the resident survey that we just talked about. Um, thank you, first of all. Those were all great comments. We'll work on that. Um, but shift gears to, um, a potential, uh, the poll that we would like to do that we've been talking about. We talked about at the council retreat. Um, the city did, um, contract with Magellan Strategies to do some polling services on, um, any potential ballot questions that you may wanna move forward with. Um, we met with them last Friday. Um, they already had a draft opinion survey put out. Um, we would like to move forward with that as soon as possible. Um, but if you wanna have a more detailed discussion about it and have it, they're actually online if you have any questions for them. Um, but we, we can reschedule, um, a study session, special study session for February 27th, but that just, that delays it a couple of weeks. Um, and I think it's important to get it going so that we could potentially conduct a second poll sometime, uh, maybe in the summer. Um, so I guess tonight we're looking for somewhat of a consensus. If, if we get the questions right, um, that we just talked about for the resident survey, the, the poll opinion survey would use the same questions. Um, are you okay letting staff move forward with that? Or do you wanna, do you want us to come back in a few weeks and talk about the poll, what it's about? I can give you a little bit more information about the methodology behind that. The, the poll, it will be a, um, they'll man- it'll be a statistically accurate and demographically representative survey of registered and likely 2023 voters. Um, Magellan uses a text survey data collection method, which results in higher survey response. Not everybody, usually if you think of a poll, you get a phone call, um, and somebody interviews you. People don't answer their phones anymore, especially if you don't know who it is. So the new method, uh, over the last several years is, is to send out a text. It looks like it's coming from the city of Wheat Ridge. It has the city's logo on it. Says the city wants to hear from you on some important, um, potential ballot measures. Please click here to take the survey. Um, they believe they would, they could do at least, um, a minimum of 500 surveys and there would be Spanish translation involved also. Um, but the survey would measure not only, um, what the opinions are from the voters on this, a potential ballot question and projects, but would also have a few other questions on voter opinion and mood of the city's direction, image, job approval and service satisf- satisfaction levels. They would, um, also have some questions going back to the 2016 ballot measure to see what the awareness of the, of the respondents are on the 2016 ballot measure and that tax rate. Um, so, um, we're more than happy to bring this back to a later date if you'd like to talk to, uh, representatives from Magellan. But, um, our recommendation is to move forward, um, using the same questions that we would have in the resident survey, um, would be on a poll. And, um, they would come back and, uh, provide you with a report on what they, what they hear in the near future. Any thoughts or questions on that? And again, we have representatives from Magellan Strategies online if you have any questions for them specifically tonight.
Uh, Counselor Weaver?
My comment would be that it would need to be a lot shorter if it's going out of question.
Be a lot shorter? It is. It's, it's, I think, about 22 questions. Takes about 12 minutes. Yes.
Counselor Hoppe?
Um, my opinion is that you move forward with the information you have. I feel like we have massive amounts of information, lots of data, and we've had lots and lots of conversations around it. And so, um, in my opinion, I'd say you move forward as quickly as possible.
Additional discussion? Uh, do we have a consensus to have staff move forward on that? Oh, okay. So a question from, uh, Counselor Hultein?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Patrick, once they do the polling, uh, how long does it take them to do it? And then when would we expect to get polling, uh, readouts?
Yeah, I believe it's a two-week period process, um, where they leave it out. Um, and actually we, there is a, uh, an option to, to allow people to opt into this one. The city can share the link to the survey. It's still statistically significant because they do wait, um, the response, responses. Um, so as the, the resident survey, no one can opt in. Um, more people can opt in to this one if they choose to. Um, so it's about a two-week period. Once we put it out, um, collect the data, then probably another couple weeks, um, they've come back and, and give a report.
And do you have a sense in the survey, um, so 12 minutes, especially through a text survey, you're, you do get attrition. Um, do you, is the, I guess I find myself more curious about wanting to know, like, what the appetite is for people to renew the half cent and less about what they wanna fund with it and more about, like, what's the-
And those questions are on there also.
Yeah, so do you know if those are, are, like, weighted more at the beginning?
Um, yeah, I think the very first question after, there's some more general questions about how you feel about Wheat Ridge. Um, I think we're looking at, just trying to think where that's at. It is towards the end of, when we talk about, um, the sales tax, would you likely vote? They try to educate the voter first with the previous questions and then they ask at the end, "Now, based on what you know, would you approve an extension of the sales tax increase?"
Um, so one of the things with polling, you and I've talked about this, but like, the polling is actually the first action in, in a campaign. Um, and so this will be the first time a lot of our residents will be hearing about this. Um, is there a resource or somewhere online that can point people to just high-level information? I know it's really hard because we haven't shaped anything, but even if it's just the framing questions that are coming into the mailed survey so that, so that people can at least, you know, have a reference point or, or somewhere to, to learn a little bit about it. If, and it, again, we can't share much because we're asking them what it is that we're supposed to do, but if they have questions, is there resources people can, like, uh?
Yeah, we'll, we'll talk to the, the pollster about that if that's wise. Um, again, you're trying to, you're trying to get the opinions of the average voter and does the average voter go to a website to, to review information
Yeah.
About projects? Um, we'll, we'll talk to them about that if we can point them.
It's a question as much as anything. Okay.
Any other discussion? It looked like we had a consensus to move forward.
Good, great.
Good. Anything further on item number two? Okay, thank you very much, uh, Ms. Schilling. Thanks for a great report on that. Good discussion. Uh, let me get back to my agenda and let's see what we need to do next. Okay. Uh, Mr. Goff, staff reports?
Nothing else from me. Staff, do you have anything, Mr. Dahl?
Nope, that's it from us.
And then we have, uh, elected officials' reports and I, I, I'm, um, telling myself I haven't heard from the clerk, so I wanted to give the clerk an opportunity to, uh, speak at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank Councilman O'Chuane and Mayor Protam Stites for attending the ribbon cutting at the Wheat Ridge Theater Company. And I wanted, since I have enjoyed every one of my visits there, and my wife is on the cultural condition, as you all know, she strongly supports it. Right now, their production is Sir Milk of Berger. If you've never seen it, uh, live on stage, uh, it is a completely different experience from the movies for a lot of reasons. And I would take note that Saturday night, uh, this week, one benefactor bought every ticket to the show. And it's bringing a busload of theater fans to the production on Saturday night. However, there are still tickets available for Thursday, Friday and Sunday. And I encourage anyone who's listening to consider going. It's not expensive and it's a great ribbon cutting. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
It was a great, uh, great ribbon cutting. Enjoyed seeing your spouse there and we have tickets to the matinee on Sunday, so if you all have a chance to go, do it. Any further- Any further, uh, business that we should conduct here at our study session before we adjourn and go safely home tonight? Seeing none, we will adjourn and, uh, hope everybody gets home very safely tonight. We will be back, uh, next week?
Are we here next week?
Are we here next week? Maybe we're not. Okay, we're off next week and, uh, we'll be back the week after that. So, thank you.